Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Harrisville City Council meeting tonight. I'm Mayor Michelle Tate and I'm happy to welcome you here. We are going to have an opening flight allegiance ceremony by Councilmember Fosse. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our business items. First one is a public hearing. This is to receive input from the public for and/or against proposed increase to the certified tax rate levy for Harrisville City. First of all, we're going to have Jenny Knight who talked us through this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The Harrisville City staff has identified three key needs to address for this proposed increase to the certified tax rate. The first need is a public relations and website service need. Currently, the city has a free website that we pay approximately $1,500 every other year to purchase the domain name, but the actual maintenance on our website is free. So we're looking into proposals or bids that would be more transparent for the public and maybe easier to navigate, but also allow city staff to post updates and keep things current so that we're not dependent on a third party for that. We've also looked into what it would entail to get a public relations contract. There's a very wide range with public relations services. Some on the low end range between $2,000 to $5,000 per month and they go up to $20,000 to $50,000 a month. We don't anticipate, obviously, seeing anything that high of a need for a city our size, but we have identified that the low end would be probably covered by a proposed property tax increase to the certified tax rate. And if adopted, the city will look into that further. We haven't solicited formal contracts yet. We've just been doing the research behind it. The second need is a code enforcement need. Historically, the code enforcement has bounced between the administration, the public works, and public safety. Most recently, a public works employee has been filling the code enforcement need, but since the uptick in our subdivision and development projects, the code enforcement element of this employee's job has become too cumbersome to fulfill and he's no longer able to meet that need. And I'd just like to please note for the council that code enforcement was not this employee's primary job responsibility nor was this employee hired to do code enforcement, was just simply covering that need for the city during this interim time. So this was an additional job responsibility that they're no longer able to meet. So staff is proposing hiring a part-time code enforcement officer to serve under the police department to provide responsive code enforcement services. And another note that staff is not recommending at this time taking a proactive code enforcement approach, but just responding to the complaints like we have in the past. The third need is planning services. Currently, staff is filling that role of a full-time planner for the city and then we're using contracted planning services for the large proposed projects or reviews for commercial site plans, subdivision reviews, et cetera, things like that. If the council identifies this as a top priority, staff will solicit either a part-time employee to cover part of the planning services or increase the contracted services that we're currently receiving from a third party. So we have identified here on the impact of the proposed and three options for the certified tax rates. The first option is the current rate, which would decrease to .001486 if the council took no action to the certified tax rate. That would mean a median residence in Harrisville of $416,000 would remain at approximately $340 annually with no increase to the certified tax rate. The second option is to maintain our current rate from last year, which is .0015. That would be approximately a $2.48 increase. That would be a .96% increase to the reduced certified tax rate. And then the proposed increase that was advertised at the 5.25%, which is the median household of, excuse me, residents at $416,000, would be an approximate $17.39 increase. And again, just a reminder at the bottom of the three key needs that the city is facing at this time with the proposed tax increase are included there on the slide.
I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council has for us staff or move into the public hearing.
I just have a little issue right here with $340 annually and then we go down to 342.38 annually, but that's an increase of $2.48 instead of $2.38.
That's my typo. Thank you, Mayor. It should be 2.38. Is that what you're doing, Karen?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm wondering what's the idea behind having not a proactive stance on the code enforcement?
So proactive code enforcement would require a lot more staffing. It would also create a situation where the city needs to maintain the same level of enforcement across the board, across the city. So that would mean an officer would go out proactively look to see if there are code violations in the city and we would need to have other staff members monitoring that to make sure that it's being applied appropriately for every
Unequally.
Unequally across the city. So that is a much larger request than the responsive code enforcement.
Okay, so what they're suggesting is just reports that we're getting, they go out and check it?
So currently, yes, currently, we respond to complaints that we know there are additional code enforcement violations in the city, but we are responsive to the complaints that we receive and we react to those complaints.
And do we expect to be able to be more responsive in a more timely manner? Do we have somebody dedicated to that?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
So my question is, is, so I have a clarification. You're talking about vehicles that are violating the city, such as?
Municipal code violations that are listed. Mainly, these apply to nuisance or building codes. That's typically what we see on a complaint is that there is a residence that is out of compliance. There is a bigger issue, but not one staff's prepared to address with animal complaints tonight, but there is an outstanding issue with that as well. So that is a common complaint that we receive is an animal control complaint, but these are specifically, the most common would be yards that are not in compliance or possibly a building code. Someone's building a type of shed or addition, yeah, or nuisance, junk-related vehicles and things like that as well.
So would this person be able to respond to the animal complaints?
Potentially, yes. Yes, they're allowed to under our municipal code respond to those, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you feel on the proposed increase would cover the three needs that were?
No, this increase would amount, that the maximum increase would bring about $50,000 revenue to the city and not all of those items would be addressed for that amount, but we would need council to prioritize which ones you would like us to address.
Any other questions, Council?
So you're saying that's just like $50,000 per annum, but we're going to see an increase overall?
It would be 50, approximately $50,000 revenue to the city at the max, at the max increase.
So can you go into a little bit more of public relations? I know that, you know, it's been a very important topic as far as transparency, especially with what's in, you know, our issues in the past with bonds and so forth. What is the public relations, what are we looking at trying to do there? You talked about transparency, but also what else is involved in that?
So the main focus would be the website to begin with. We received a lot of feedback that it's difficult to navigate. People can't find it. It's maybe not mobile friendly. Hiring a professional to design and create a more user-friendly website. Again, we don't pay for those services currently. We just use a free module and we were doing that as a cost savings measure, but if council identifies that it's a priority for us, we will, we will do what we can. So that would be the main focus is creating a user-friendly website. Some of the other ideas that we have used or tossed around as staff that would help are showcasing what is happening in the city, being more proactive to let the residents know what measures are being taken to improve our city, whether that's through videography, photography, or just increasing our newsletter, reaching and doing other outreach, things that have been suggested by council members, sending out additional information on our projects that we have going out. All of those things cost or come at a cost to the city. So, and then hiring the help to do that. A part-time contracted service, someone who can focus their job responsibilities on creating transparent resources for our public. That's, that would be the goal of that item.
Okay, thank you.
If we were to maintain our current rate, would we be able to provide cost of living and merit increases with our personnel?
Let me ask you.
With the maintained rate?
With the .0015?
Yes.
Yes, we would be able to meet the cost of living for the employees.
What are we looking at in the planning service? I know that we talked about the need for that. That's a big item. Kind of explain to me, what are we looking at? The planning and projection of where we want to go with, with the Harrisville City? Or is this also working within current projects that are going on? When we talk about planning service, or just trying to get a grip on the general work?
Both. The contracted services come in very handy when we have an application that's received and we can send the information off to that third party. They can review it against our code and they can make recommendations or they can work with the applicant to make sure that it meets the code of the city. The main time-consuming issue for staff is the inquiries. Sometimes people are inquiring about a proposed project and those conversations can be very lengthy. In addition to that, I know that some council members have expressed interest in us being more proactive to bring businesses in and that's, that can, that is very difficult to address with our current staff to be more proactive about the planning resources that we have. So those are some of the things that we've identified are our gaps in our current services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to kind of summarize with that question. The goal for us in getting a city planner is to be able to actually map out what we're going to do with areas that we have left to be able to build open space, try to solicit and get businesses to come in so that we can decrease the tax burden on residents, but it does come at a little bit of a cost to the city. Is that what I'm understanding?
It's a question or statement for heads?
A little bit of both.
Yes, that would be ideally. The, the general plan needs to be updated every 10 years. We're about halfway through that, that process. At this point, we adopted our most recent one in 2019, but as the state legislation has shifted, it has, this year, they've created a lot of, well, a few housing options that are, are really good negotiating tools with developers and development, but come again at a cost to the city to be able to focus on, on that to make sure that we are meeting not just the state mandates, but being proactive about what we want our city to look like in the future. So it keeps us compliant as well instead of... Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, we'll move on to our public hearing, but I need a motion to move into that.
How many more should we move into the public hearing?
Second. Now a motion is second, I'll leave her?
Right.
Okay, and then pose. So we're moving into a public hearing. I am going to remind you what this entails. The public hearing will give you an opportunity to state your opinion and share your thoughts. Please remember tonight's public hearing is not a discussion. Feedback in regard to your questions or comments may not be provided in this meeting or this evening. Please remember to state your name clearly and state into the microphone when taking part in the public comment period. Each person will have three minutes. Please be mindful of the time. Be respectful, no pointing, shouting or applause. Any member of the public will be asked to leave if their conduct is disorderly and escorted if necessary. The governing body on a two-thirds vote may expel any person who is disorderly during this meeting. So with that, I invite you, with your comments about this truth in taxation meeting, to come up and address the council, please.
Kevin Karas. I'm glad I came this evening. The newsletter gave me the impression that the increase for other purposes and the fees that were listed were what's a lot over and then it would be one of them, obviously, was presented to be one of them in what your needs. If I were to look at your needs, it sounds like your code enforcement would be one of those, but I'm, unlike a lot of people, I'm wary of increases in the past that the city council recognized that there's, there's a lot of pressure on you for sure as you go and accommodate increases. You've had other increases, don't need to go with the history, but it seemed to run a pattern where it's like, well, we've, money's no problem. All they do is have a truth in taxation hearing and then we'll all vote yes. Appreciate your comments and I'll try to hear your, your interest in it. Again, I ask that perhaps there be some vehicle used to make accommodations in the existing budget and that you don't continue to exasperate the party with increases and that you even still have bonds that you're going to be after and this will just be one more boil on the, on the whole large boil amongst people. I think it's well within your means to help accommodate a whole bunch of like this without any use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Hadley, just north of the old golf course there. I appreciated the information as well. I, I know you can't answer this question, but I do have a question to be noted and hopefully can be answered in some way after. With the, with the information that was out in the packet, wondering why that information maybe isn't included in that proposed increase already? Meaning that it's out there showing that this is what's going to be in the budget? And if it is, which I don't know that I fully can, I'm not sure why we need a 5.25% increase when our total budget is actually going to be, last year's was 5.9, this year's going to be 5.4. And so it feels like a tax increase actually would, you know, it's an unneeded burden if everything can be done in what is actually proposed. And so if we're asking for more and we're actually needing to expend less, that would, that doesn't make financial sense to anybody that's in the public. And so I think my, my vote would be either to be at the current rate, at the very most would be at a maintaining level rate because I know that there are those increases that are, are needed. However, if, if by chance that it is already in the proposed budget, I don't see the need for a proposed increase if we have a decrease in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Jensen. I appreciate the work in the city council trying to keep our budget down. I'm just wondering though if we've looked at all different options, especially looking out of the box. There is that we spent a lot of money on, that there's other options. If you look at the, all the cities in Lieber County, Harrisville is the, there's 12, 18 cities in Lieber County who are 12th in population, 15th in area. So we're pretty small area-wise and we've got kind of a small population, yet we're the fourth highest taxed city in Lieber County. Only Washington Terrace, South Ogden, and Ogden are higher. There are... If you look at ways to cut taxes, our biggest expenditure is probably the police department, right? That's about $2.3 million last year. There are four cities in Lieber County, Far West, Plain City, Hooper, West Haven, that have populations higher than Harrisville. Do not have a police department. They have a contract that serves to, the Lieber County Sheriff's Department. Far West is the closest to our population. They have 8,100 people in our city, approximately. We have about 6,700, about. Far West paid $735,000 in 2023 for police and we paid $2.26 million, about three times higher. There's probably a good reason we have a police department. I'm not advocating for yes, I'm just pointing out that if we looked at all the options, there's one, there's one thing, a glaring one in my mind that takes most of our budget that maybe we can think about and if we, basically best decision to keep our police department, I'm all for it, but if there's, if we can save money and get a good service from Lieber County, then we must do that too. That's my call to please.
Thank you.
My name's Curtis Christensen. I'm a resident of Harrisville, I've been for quite a number of years. I have some of the same concerns that Kevin Jensen just expressed a few moments ago. We have a, our big budget, big item in the budget is an item that other communities have realized that they can share some of the expenses with larger entities or as a whole. I find it interesting that we decided, yeah, we lose some control, but we're not willing to look at that seriously, I don't believe, or we haven't looked at it seriously and to see what we can actually say. I know a few years ago you had a meeting with, or I've been told anyway, that you had a meeting with the current sheriff and that you, you decided, no, we don't want to do that. I don't know what your savings would have been, what he said they would be, but it may be time to look at that again before you increase your budgets significantly. If, if we can make, save you, save $100,000 or half a million dollars, I think we need to look at that more seriously rather than just say, well, I don't have as much control of the situation as I would want. Maybe you can build that into your contracts with the, with the county or with other agencies. And I see one of your... Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm at the table, Rush. I know there have been, we've had a good force and they've done a lot of good things, but it's maybe time to move on to something else. Hopefully, we're a growing city, but we're not growing fast enough to keep up with our demands, apparently. And the only way that you're seeing is we're one of the highest taxed entities in the county. Maybe we need to look at other options there, other ways to lower our costs. That may be one of them and it may be hurtful a little bit initially. So I leave that with you to think.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Homash. Good catch. And I live in here in Harrisville as well. I've been here for over 20 years. One of the things that I'm concerned about, first of all, because I just read the truth in taxation thing tonight, is that the ones that's going to actually see this proposed increase are the ones that have lived here for many years. I see all these new houses being built, but they're not going to be affected by any tax increase. We're the only ones that's going to take it on. So I feel that the people that are living here are the ones that are being punished for living here and I don't think that's right. But there are some things that I want to address because somebody went to a tax meeting in our group not too long ago and they came up and they were talking about all the different tax increases. The one thing, first of all, and I know you can answer any questions, but when you discuss this again, if I can maybe know what, when we're talking about all these new bills and all that that were passed on at the state Capitol, if I can get one of those bills that I can research it more? Because that's one of the things that I like to do. But what I see right now, because we've already gone through a lot of tax increases from several different entities. One was just the fire department who was looking at one. I'm wondering what the purpose is, is are you wanting to tax us out of our homes? Because there are a lot of us that are on fixed income. Two years ago, my house payment went up $300 and it substantially hit me in the pocketbook. I have kids that do not live in this area. I can no longer travel to see them because of the tax increase and I have to live on a very tight budget. I see now that my property tax, my property value is going back up, which means that even at the .015, you guys do stand to make some money more than what you made last year when property taxes went down. In the Utah Constitution, section one, article one, it does give people the right to acquire and possess property. And I feel that with this tax increase, we are being taxed out of our property. Now, I know they both talked about the police department. I have nothing against the police department and I will tell you, I support them. My daughter was just nearly, my granddaughter was just nearly adopted in Plain City last month and I believe that we had a police department that could respond, we would have had a better response than what, than what the sheriff's department did. I believe I talked to Max about that. Basically, nothing has been done because they did not react on it fast enough. So that person is still out there. Sorry. Our framers formula for blasting freedom is we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That unalienable right one is to acquire or possess property. And so I am, I mean, if we have to do the maintain rate, that's one thing, but I am not for the 17.39.
Your time is up.
Name's Rand Ellis, live over by Orion Junior High. I think I would be okay with the maintain rate, you know, I mean, I get it, costs and things go up. I am happy to hear that there's not proactive code enforcement, I don't feel that people should be harassed and nannied. I know there's a fine line between keeping things nice. I lived next to a crap hole before the neighbors moved in and I never complained, you know, because I feel like you can always be bothering someone no matter what you do, but that's another topic as far as the police department. I'm okay with having our locals, I have decent experiences with our police department. I don't feel that they are kind of like Pleasant View, every time I see a Pleasant View cop, they're on the side of the road trying to write revenue generating slips and I don't agree with that, I feel like ours are typically out patrolling, responding to crime and so, you know, goodos to them, that we're not out harassing people writing them, you know, revenue generation slips. But anyways, I'd be fine with the maintain.
Thank you.
My name's Gerodra Callum, I lived in Harrisville since 1985 and first of all, let me thank all of you for your service, we do appreciate it, we're not up there and it's, it's hard and I understand that, my dad served as a mayor and on city councils, so it, it is a tough job and we appreciate what you do. Having said that, however, I think that we've seen recently with the city of Harrisville with bonds and with the recent tax increase, how the people of Harrisville feel about tax increases. And I am not any different than them, I'm very much against tax increasing. I ran a, I just recently retired, ran a successful physical therapy practice for oh, about 39 years and in that period of time, having to deal, having to deal with insurance companies, I saw reimbursements decrease, 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 while my expenses increased, 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 increased. So what that required me was to manage well, which is what we expect the city council and the city manager to do, is to manage well. Whether that be with the police department or whatever, I don't know the answer to that, you guys know the budget much better than we do. But I would ask you to go back and look at what you can cut, what fat can we trim from the meat? Because I guarantee you, there is some there. I never had to take a cut in pay because we managed, our expenses went up, our income went down, were at very best state level for years and years and years, and I never had to take a pay cut because we managed well, we cut, we cut the fat and we, we just did whatever we needed to do to survive. So I would ask the city council to go back and managers, the departments to go back and look at the budgets and see what you can trim. If we're only talking about $50,000 in a city, that's not an enormous amount of money. You should be able to find $50,000 and I would hate to compare you guys to the federal government because heaven knows they could turn trillions of dollars from their budget with the waste that's there. And I'm not saying that you guys are wasteful, don't misunderstand that, but I'm sure that there are things that you could find that you're not aware of if you looked closely and if your manager, or if your department managers looked closely. But again, thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Last call.
Jordan, Jordan Billwright. I, I think I echo a lot of the fellow citizens' opinions here that tax increases in the time where we are in the highest inflation in decades is almost a joke. A lot of, a lot of your constituents, people that voted for you and to, to serve us, we have to make cuts to our daily spending, our weekly spending, our monthly spending in order to survive with higher food prices, higher gas prices, higher costs to heat our homes, cool our homes, and just to live in general. We don't get to raise our salary as our costs go up, that's more money out of my pocket that I don't get back. I, I, I will echo the, the comment that there is, I would dare say there is a lot of fat that we could trim in our budget. I, I think we have more of a spending problem than we have an income problem. And I think we need to seriously take a look at what we are, you know, our frivolous spending, spending on nice fancy toys. And we, we, we seriously need to make some cuts, because you're, you're hurting your citizens. If, if this goes through, yes, that may not be a lot now, for the last tax increase, the one before that, the one before that, the next however many tax increases. What, what do you, what do you expect us to do? We have to live. We want to live in Harrisville, it's a small town, it's a quiet town, we have very few problems, at least in the area that I live in. I am fortunate enough and blessed enough that that tax increase might not affect me very much, but I can't say the same for my neighbors down the street. And like the young lady earlier said, there's a lot of people on fixed incomes. That, that small increase now could potentially have a huge impact on these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing meeting.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, I'll adjourn.
Aye.
All right. This is a different kind of meeting than our regular, we go to Mayor Council, Paula. The only thing that I need to address is that the League of Cities and Towns having their meeting, their convention in September, you'd like Jenny to attend that? And then other than that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. I have a motion to adjourn in a second, I'll adjourn.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The meeting's now adjourned.